What do you sign up here?
I don't know, uh, to, uh, to speak.
Yeah.
Ask, they probably got a list, they probably got a list of the names. Do they have a list of the sign up people?
Uh, yes, let me go, I'm gonna go.
Uh, yes, let me go. Let me go, I'm gonna go.
I think I got one now. 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 I think I got one now.[253.78][253.90][S06. .
How's it going?
Yeah.
I'll try to have the video.
Oh, you're all right, I'm sure.
Gary, get her in.
In the middle. Okay.
Yeah, I might add something to that.
It feels good.
So, we're seeing all the quality of the road.
It's good. Taking it. It's tough. 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 I'm just kidding. 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 Y'all can hear that. He's saying.
How y'all doing?
Let's go, man. Get ready.
You're fine. I was, I was getting it.
Did anybody else want to spot, sign up to speak?
I was, I was getting it.
Did anybody else want to spot, sign up to speak?
Sorry, ma'am. I knew they weren't going.
I'm going to give my, my, my. So, my, 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 my.
I want down my head.
Call in the meeting room. This is our regular meeting as a board of trustees at Dangerfield Long Star ISD. Today is Monday, February 20th of 2023. At this time, everybody will please stand. Mr. Ronnie Solis in prayer and followed by the second of the.
Father, Father, we're praying. Just seeing how the Father just come, just giving you thanks for all the blessings he has given us. We realize all the good and perfect he has come from you. So, we ask that you continue to watch over this school district. Bless you best our administrators, our teachers, our staff, our students, and also our community, heaven Father. We ask you to bless this meeting, bless it be carried out according to your will, heaven Father, and that you'll be pleased with us. Lord, we come ask for forgiveness for our sins, heaven Father. For you find anything within us not right, we ask you to take it out and give us strength to do your will. Lord, we come just thanking you for everything you have done and everything that you will do. And Lord, we ask you to continue to watch over us and leading us and what you have us to do. These are all blessings we asking you, son, Jesus Christ's name, we pray and we ask it all. Amen.
Amen.
The United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mind your wake up.
No, you're not.
At this time, we want to welcome all of our guests, and we have nine that are signed up tonight to speak. Our first is Ms. Frances Evans. Oh, I'm so sorry, I'm supposed to read the statement for them. The board encourages comments about the district for members of the vote. Anyone who has signed up to speak in advance of the meeting and accordance with the board procedures may do so at this time. The board asks that each participant's comments pertaining to district business be no longer than three minutes. Remember that the board may not discuss or act upon any issues that are not posted on our agenda. Speakers should refrain from revealing the identity of any students of the Dangerfield Long Star ISD that might be the subject of their comments. Additionally, any speaker who might have a concern or complaint about APLS ISD employees should refrain from using that employee's name during their presentation to the board, and should also refrain from otherwise revealing the identity of the employee during their presentation. The public comments portion of our agenda is not intended to be a forum for holding up school district employees to public privilege. BLSISD provides a forum and process for bringing complaints against school employees through its grievance policies. In addition, the board has adopted policies to provide prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns for employees, students of, or their parents, and the general public. Copies of our district policies and procedures on public comments and filing complaints are available in the administration office, 200 Tiger Drive, Dangerfield, Texas. And at this time, Ms. Frances Evans.
Uh, more than a year, standing. We just turned my desk.
Okay, well, I need to give this to the board first.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
As you know, I am Frances Darling Lee Evans, I hope everybody can hear me. But the community and I are here because of some questions after reading a public article stating that after a lengthy closed session to talk, to take possible action regarding an extension or increase of the superintendent's contract. The motion being tabled has raised some concerns. The main concern is that we want to ensure that the superintendent is not being treated any differently than previous superintendents. As board members, each of you have ethical duties to uphold according to the local school board policy, BBF. Board member, members ethics such as being fair, just, and impartial in all decisions and actions. Also, a very important ethical duty is that you will base your decisions on facts rather than suppositions, opinions, or public favor. The current superintendent and all of her family are graduates of Dangerfield Long Star ISD. She has taught at Dangerfield for 14 years, principal for 14 years, completed her superintendent certification into, in 2010. She applied for an open position as superintendent. She was named the lone finalist and given a 21-day waiting period by the board. Officially, she was hired on May the 20th of 2022 by the board. Certainly, the decision was made from her leadership qualities and not by being proud of it. The community and I would like these questions answered at the next board meeting during open session. Why did the board only consider getting a one-year contract, yet consented to a two-year contract? But why not give her authority as other superintendents? Why didn't the superintendent have hiring rights this summer as previous superintendents? Why does a certain principal have direct contact with the board? The community feels that this is causing some board members to show favor towards that principal. What was the reason the newly hired superintendent contract was tabled? There was a motion at the last board meeting to table voting of the extension of the superintendent's contract. So, when will this be readdressed? The community wants to remind the board that they are to avoid personal involvement in activities the board has delegated to the superintendent. The community is asking at the time of renewal or extension of the contract is addressed, there will be no stipulations attached. We want to ensure that the superintendent can make overall decisions to hire according to needs and the budget of the district. Lastly, we can clearly see that the superintendent is a well-qualified leader. We are not trying to make this a racial situation as it has been stated, not yet.
Next, we have Mr. Tracy Franklin.
Well, she said everything that I was saying. I just asked for fairness, and I feel like she's a good person. The, the superintendent that we have now, she's fair. She loves the Lord. She's a good person, I just, we just ask for fairness.
Thank you, Tracy, and next is Joe Austin, Mr. Joe Austin.
You know, everything that she said was like what I've written down myself. But in a way, I'd like to thank you everyone for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Joe Austin Senior, and was like the, Melissa, Neil, James, Scott, Kelly, Randy, Joe, my son. Forty years ago this year, I was elected to the school board here in Dangerfield. I served about 10 years on the school board. We had our ups and downs, but one thing we always tried to do is do what was right. Remember, right is always the right thing to do. I notice in Omaha, in Omaha and Naples School, Hughes Springs School. Here, seem like we have more problems than they have there. And, um, Randy and Scott, y'all remember how we used to solve problems at Long Star ISD? We used to start with the problem and go backwards to find out what is the root cause of the problem. Okay, some of you, some of you have problems with Mrs. Lewis. I think this, some of you do. But let's look at this. Mrs. Lewis, let's look at her qualifications. She's been in the school system for over 30 years. She's been a principal. She have had a certification to be superintendent for over, over 10. Over 10 years. We're gonna get down to the root cause of the problem now. Now, remember, I think everybody can agree that she's qualified for the position that she's holding. But y'all agree to that?
Yes.
Now, let's look at the root cause of the problem, okay? The root cause of the problem, and Scott and Randy know how we used to do this at Long Star. We start and go back. The root cause of the problem is, now, let me say this first. Hughes Springs, Omaha, Naples, they have, if I'm not correct, if I'm wrong, they have a female superintendent. And we have a female superintendent here. Okay, the root cause of the problem is, she's a female, and she's black.
That's it.
That's, that's, that's the bottom line. You might not want to accept that, but that's it. But you gotta remember, God love all of us. And we should be very proud of who we are. It doesn't matter what, what race we are. It doesn't matter. I'd like to thank y'all for listening to me. Give me a call sometime.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Next, we have Dawn Daryl Martin.
God know everybody. I'm gonna trust, now based on what they, y'all know he said, or based on what Joe said, I really don't like to say anything. I just wanna say this, I, I'm gonna trust that this board, I have no compass in this board, that there is no way they cannot do right by Miss Leeson, based on what they heard tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Next, we have, Ms. Beverly Austin.
I'm here. Hello, everybody. I'm here. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for affording me this time. My name is Beverly Austin, and I have been a resident of Dangerfield for the past 14 years. I have been a public servant here for the past 12 years, and I presently sit on the Dangerfield Economic Development Commission. And that's part of the reason why I wanted to speak. I am here to talk just three minutes about progress, the progress that we are making in our community, and how Dangerfield ISD plays a very important role in that progress. First, I would like to commend our superintendent. We support her. We think she's very qualified for this, and thank you all for bringing that point up earlier. I'd like to commend the teachers, the parents, the families, the students, and the school board for your progress, because we are all going to make our school district awesome. But to continue to make progress in our community, I'd like to make a recommendation. Can we form partnerships? The reason is, a partnership is like the human body. In order for a body to function well, it needs a head, it needs arms, it need legs, and you need feet. These parts are partnering with each other so the whole body can work. And just like your body, a community government needs all its parts to work. Our community government is a system. It's a system of partnerships. First, we have the county government, we have the county commissioners, we have city management, we have city council, we have our mayor, we have chambers, we have the business community, we have Dangerfield ISD, we have economic development, and we have our residents. So, our school administration is a part of a system, just one part. You're one part, but you're a very important part. From an economic development perspective, I would like to see our school administration to continue to progress. So, employers want to relocate here. So employers want to relocate here. Why? Because Dangerfield needs jobs. We need jobs. And what do employers look for? They look for safe places to live, to eat, to recreate, good homes, and especially good schools. Your role is most important. We all want our schools and the students to excel, to function well. In looking at the Dangerfield website, I found that all of the schools have an effective improvement plan and a family and parent engagement policy. This is progress. Not only are our schools making progress, but so is our county and city governments. We are not standing still. We are all moving in the right direction. So let's keep going. Our community is changing.
I'm sorry.
Okay, okay. Our community is changing. I understand that some of you are in com, might not be comfortable with change, but change is necessary. And I would like for you all to consider that change is not a bad thing. And it can keep going and keep progressing.
Again, thank you, Ms. Austin. Next, this is Ms. Madi Peters.
I didn't sign up to speak, but I will.
Are you sure?
Well, good evening to everyone. I stand before you all, it's good to see so many out in support of our school system. Give yourself a hand. And don't let this be the last time. I know we're all here in support of Miss Lisa Lewis, which I've known her all my life, a fair lady. She, education is her number one goal. At West Elementary, she's always, she was always concerned as a principal about the kids learning something every day. The same thing with the entire school system. She wants the school system to function well. And to function well, we all have to function together. When we function apart, things fall apart, the foundation have to stand. My kids graduated from Dangerfield Long Star ISD, and I'm very proud. I have one that's in Seaman in Massachusetts, one that works for the airline in Dallas, Texas, and my daughter, she works for HL Hunt. All products of Dangerfield Long Star ISD. And Miss Lisa Lewis had a hand in that, not only in my kids, all you all around here. So I just asked the board to come together and agree, whatever the distinction is, come together on it. I'm proud of Long Star ISD. Everywhere I go, I brag about it. But don't let this be all over the newspapers, unfairness toward our superintendent. Always good to do the right thing.
Thank you, Ms. Madi. Next we have Connie R. Johnson.
Hi, everybody. I am a visitor, but I would like to say that in my years that I have worked in education, I have been on every campus in this school district, every campus. And I met several of the teachers because I've worked with them. I wanna say, Miss Lisa Lewis, I saw Miss Lisa Lewis at Region Eight every time I turned around. She was walking in that door, just as graceful and beautiful to learn something else, to bring back to the school. And I mean, all the time, I was proud to see her. You know, she was quiet and, I'm gonna tell you, smart people, they don't rat law. Smart people, they have it up here, but they don't try to just dish it out and let you know how smart they are. It takes a lot to become a superintendent. There is so much you have to go through. You have to have a brain. You have to be brilliant. And you have to be able to take a lot, because you got to satisfy everybody, the school district, the students, the parents. You got it, you got so much you got to deal with, and I have not heard one, one, one iota of anything that was negative about this board. I knew Miss Judy Pollard, worked with her. I knew Miss Quarr, I worked with her. Now you got Miss Lisa Lewis. This is black history money. You will take this money yourself. I, but like I said, then you, you, you hired her during COVID. That's been a terrible time to be employed anywhere. You know, because the kids are having trouble, the teachers are having trouble, everybody's in a dilemma. So this is not the time to just say, oh, I'm gonna drop her. Just drop her. You don't drop nobody like that. That's negative. And you know what? She's giving everything to this school district. Y'all gotta pick her back up and lift her up. You don't do people like that. I just heard what they said, you can come in and, she must have been only one qualified. If you hired her then and she was qualified, she's still one. But you need to pick that up too. And see, I have mother, my mother, they call her grand, grandma, I got a little bit of that. But I'm a third-generation educator, and I want to stand here, and I want to speak for Miss Lisa Lewis in this district. And when I came to Texas, the first thing I heard about was Dangerfield. I didn't even get, I wouldn't even live here, but all I heard was Dangerfield. And I said, Dangerfield, that's a terrible name.
Okay, thank you very much. Next we have Tristan Mason.
Hello, good evening. My name is Tristan Mason. I just wanted to come and speak on doing what's right. Right is right, and right is always gonna be right, no matter the color, the race, the gender. Doing what's right has to come first. The heart of our community is trust. Some of us, we drink coffee together, we shop at Roosters together, we go to church together. And the way we make a community, a community and work the best it can be is trusting each other. This board was put together, and we trust you guys to do what's right in our community. We trust you to be an example. We trust you to lead in the right direction. Now, when it comes to it, it doesn't matter color or race to me, do what's right towards people. If you got a job, you want the right to try to make a change. You should come in where people are already against you from the beginning. When it comes to it, we have to be just in all that we do, and we have to represent the community. This is a community of people who are trusting in the school board to do what's right for their baby. They are trusting that every opportunity and everything you do is to promote education, wellness, and doing what's right. So all I want to say is, no matter what goes on, in your heart, look back at your heart. Look inside of you. Ask yourself, are you doing what's right towards the community? And are you looking at what's best for the community and not what's best for you?
Thank you, Mr. Mason. Finally, we have Ms. Tammy Sharp.
Hello, everybody. I'm here on behalf of Miss Lewis, as well as everyone else that are concerned about what's going on here at Dangerfield. One of the questions that I had, I asked myself, and I want to ask for the board, why? How have we came to this point to where we do not want to renew her contract? What is it that she has done so bad that warrants that she cannot come back, or y'all don't want her back? And so my question also to you is, who have you already predestined to take her position? And I already made up on who you want to put in the position. That mean that you don't want her in the current position. So I'm still gonna put it like this right here. It boils afterward, it's a black and white thing. It's a woman or a girl. First woman, first black woman to be a superintendent here. And now y'all want to go ahead and uproot her up out of her position. Why is my question? Why do you want to do that? What has she done? I feel like the community need to know what it is that she has done in order for y'all to love her. I've been knowing her for a long time. And as someone spoken earlier, I have never heard any negative thing said by this woman. I do know that she's a person that cares, she's loved, and she want what's best for this community. She want what's best for the students that are here at the Dangerfield Long Star Independent School District. I have had children to come in up under her. I even got a grandbaby that, that, that has came in up under her. And so my thing is that if she was good for all the other positions in this district, why? And I think the community demands those, those questions to be answered. We want to know what's going on.
All right, thank you, everybody. This is a lot of love for you in this room. We're gonna move on. You're all welcome to stay for the remaining of our meeting. Or at this time, I mean, if anybody needs to go, you can, I mean. We're gonna move on to our consent items. And the first on our agenda is the meetings of the, the minutes of the regular meeting from January nineteenth, 2023. Motion was made by Joe Austin, second by Scott Pollan. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, the motion carries. Second on our administrative report, we're gonna send it over to our superintendent.
Okay, dates for the board, I'll be quick before you. Our progress reports will come out tomorrow. I will be going to Brown Rock Tuesday and Thursday for First Time Superintendents Academy. And we will have board training on March the sixth in the boardroom in the administration building. And a few updates. As you can see, the weight room is no longer there. They've completely finished that process of tearing it down. The roofing projects here at the high school are complete. They moved on to the junior high to work on those projects there. The FFA contest that was held here today at the high school was a success. And we'll have a basketball playoff game tomorrow night in Winona against West Russ, starting time at seven o'clock. And next month, Sword of Strength will be presented by Mr. Pierce, here at the high school. And it's just a new program to help our students out who are dealing with mental, mental issues. It's a team approach of some students and, and staff members will be participating in that. And Jason was going to do his presentation today, but we have a new website. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it, but it's been totally revamped, and he's worked really hard on that, and it looks really good. And I don't have any correspondence.
Does anybody have any questions? Both the dates for the board? If not, we'll move on to our next item, which is our financial report.
We can't hear you.
Everything is as it should be at this point. Nothing, nothing else to be ordered. January thirty-first, our news and expenditures are right on the money. The interest in thinking, well, I'll pay my loan late in February, so that'll show up on the next one. That's really the only significant thing that we had going so far this month.
At this time, we'll go on to our discussion items. Our first one is Northeast Texas Community College Work for College Program.
Thank you. My name is John McCullough from the college. I'm glad you're all here to see me tonight. I do want to say, I'm gonna present about the work for college, but some of this stuff I'm gonna say is very relative to you, especially if you've got somebody in your family or a friend or a neighbor that's in either ninth, tenth, eleventh, or twelfth grade right now. So what is, we've got a program out the college, it's all privately supported, which means people make donations to it to make sure this happens. I'm gonna give you all the truncated version, the quick version is, because I can talk about it for hours, because it's a great program. But I want you to know, the bottom line is this, students come out and they work during the summer. They can start after their 10th grade year in high school. And they come out and they work at the college during the summer. To give you an example, we had ninety-five students in the program last year. So we're not talking about one or two or three students. And, and they actually, they work during the summer months between their, their school year, and they actually make fifteen dollars an hour. That's good pay. Now, there's a catch. I won't tell everybody the catch. I think you're gonna like the catch though, especially for your kids. And, and the catch is that seven fifty goes into their pocket for spending money, and the other seven fifty goes into an account with their name on it that they have up until two years to spend at the college taking classes. So they're paying for their college before they ever go to college, which you know, people struggle like it's money's the reason I don't go to college. So we're trying to take that struggle away from you. And then you got this other thing about, there's still that stigma out there. And, and y'all know, I work at Northeast Texas Community College. I've seen some of y'all that have worked out there and retired out there and that I've known out there. I've been out there a long time, and I believe in our mission. And our mission is to provide an educational opportunity. So I've heard some kid come out there and say, I've talked to them, they say, well, my, my granddad told me I'm not college material. I'm gonna tell you right now, that is false. I don't care who says it and who they say it to. Because when you think of a community college, you gotta think a little bit differently, and that is, for every lawyer you have out there, you need a welder. For every teacher you have out there, you need a cosmetologist. For every doctor you have out there, you need an auto mechanic. So, so when people think college, they think algebra, you know, biology, chemistry. There's also welding, you know, all these automotive classes, all these nursing-related classes. So college is for everybody. So I'm presenting this to the board, but I'm telling y'all, because I'm leaving applications here that they have to be filled out by, by the fourteenth of April. So what happens is, they come out to the college, and, and they actually work during the summer, and they get their hands dirty. It may not be the field they're gonna major in, but, but we want them to learn to work. Many of them have never been given a chance to, to work anywhere. So it's not just working, it's learning to work. And what's happened over the years is, we started this with fifteen students about seven years ago. We're up to ninety-five students last year. Well, there's only so many jobs at our college. So what we've done is, we've moved it to, and especially because one of the barriers has been, well, my son wants to work, but he can't get out to the college. So what we've done is, with, with four other schools already, we've moved it to their high schools. So they can work in our program at their local high school. And it's not just made-up work, it's, it's gotta be meaningful work, which means it, that, that's means, if that kid wasn't doing it, somebody else would have to be doing it. That's meaningful work. So at our college, they might be working on farms. If any of y'all have worked on a farm, you know there's meaningful work on a farm. And there's a lot of work. Or they might be painting the hallways. They might be working in student services, giving tours as a, as a junior in high school, giving a tour to an incoming freshman. You know, we've got all You know, we've got all these different jobs. Then we put them on the high school campuses, and we work with the high schools on this. And that's kind of say, here, they do have to take a class. And that's a part of it, and the class is paid for. They get accepted in the program, it's a college class, and it's paid for for them being in the program. And so we work with the high schools, we come out and teach the class at the high school campus. And the very first thing they have to do in that class is, they have to learn to say thank you. They have to write a handwritten letter to whoever it was that sponsored their scholarship, because that's what it is. And then they learn everything from how to say thank you. And you know what? We've found, first of all, we surveyed the students, okay? More than 70% of them have never written a handwritten letter. Because, gosh, we've got texts, you know, we've got emails, we've got all this stuff. Well, there's nothing more powerful than getting a handwritten letter for somebody takes the time to write that letter down, say, "Thank you for sponsoring this opportunity." They have to take a manners class. You know what? Some people don't have manners. Can you believe that? But so it's not they're out there taking classes, they're studying all these books, they're taking social skills classes. We help them build a resume. We help them to apply for other colleges if they want to go off. We do all these things, and our goal is to give them an opportunity to go to college without having to take a student loan or acquire debt. And that is our goal in this program. So we work with the high schools, and you know, we come and sit down at the high school and say, "If y'all would like to do this, here's kind of how it works. We just need to make sure that the students are monitored." There's liability issues, which means they can work on a college campus or a state-supported campus, which in this case, high school, elementary, junior high, wherever the work is needed. So I'll give you an example. In Wesboro, they work with the plant services crew, you know, because the weeds grow all summer long. Somebody's had to be cut, mowing, cutting the weeds, stuff. We just make sure they're following safety procedures. But we would like, it's been a barrier. We've come over and spoken to Dangerfield. So this is Mason May, he's the director of the program. Mason just came and spoke to some of y'all's students that just about a week or so ago, you know, trying to get them to encourage them to apply for it. Because we want to have students from all areas. We want to give them an opportunity to go to college. And we want to give them an opportunity to work too. And a good job, a good safe job, you know, where they're actually getting some training. And that's a big part of it. But I'm not going to take too much of y'all's time. What I'm going to say is, for any of you parents or friends or neighbors of somebody who want to leave this, it's also, it's called workforcollege.com. We've been doing this for six years, we've had over 400 students do this. And in high school, if they will do this and they set aside some money, then they've got what we call skin in the game. And if you're paying for your own classes, you're more likely to do better in your own classes. And so it's kind of what some of us grew up with 50 years ago, you know? And it's that same mentality that we kind of got away from a little bit, but we're getting back to it, and we're starting out the college. And that's our roots, and we want to have students from here in this program. I know that's what y'all came here for tonight. But back to the board, I'm sorry, I had an audience of potential students, you know, our parents and students out here. I couldn't take an opportunity to not just sell it. But what questions do y'all have of the program? I did great. No, I answered everything. What we have done is, we've left, we'll leave it with superintendent here and anybody else. It's just a snapshot of the program, but it kind of states how it works. And it's got my information in there and Mason's information in there. And if you're interested, we'd like to come over and sit down and talk with you even a little bit more individually about how it works. It's 10 weeks during the summer. It's not a full-time job. They can only work 15 hours a week because we're teaching them to work. And you know, many of them have other things. If they're in football, what we do is, we want to work around their football summer schedule. If they're in band, we want to work around their band. If they go to church camp two weeks a year, we want them to go to church camp. And we want to work around their schedules because we still want them to grow up and have the things, you know, that you want your high school or your students to have. But at the same time, we're flexible, but we also have expectations. And the expectation is, you know, if you're not at work, well, first of all, if you're supposed to be there from eight o'clock to three o'clock, that doesn't mean you show up at 8:01. It means you show up at 7:45. And you know what? Some of them don't know that, because guess what? Some of them have never been taught that either, haven't been in the first way they've been taught. So we're trying to teach the other fundamentals. They will learn to work. We find, once the students get in the program, they love it. And what we really find is, they end up taking college classes and going on and pursuing their education in whether it's a four-year degree or a great trade. Because we need the trades, and there's so many students out there that everybody's college material. Okay, she asked what grade level. They can start after their 10th grade year, and they can be in the program two years. So if they're in the program after their 10th grade year, they can be in it after their junior year also. And then by then, they will have saved up, I'm going to do the math real fast. If they pay $15 an hour, if they work the maximum amount of 150 hours, they make $2,250 during the summer. Half of that goes in their pocket, half of it goes toward their tuition fees. Here's another catch. They have to use this over here, they lose it. They don't lose the money that's in their pocket. But it's because we want them to go to college. And so we've given them an opportunity. Most of them, almost everyone of them uses it, you know? So we don't ever have to worry about that part. But then if they work two summers, that doubles, the money doubles there. So you know, before, when they graduate, they could have $2,250 in a bank account. That's almost a full year of college at NTCC. We're not a $40,000 a year, you know, Texas A&amp;M. If I offended anybody. But the reality is, Texas A&amp;M costs $30,150 a year. So does UT, so does Texas Tech. And so, you know, we cost $3,000 a year. Most of our students, we can get financial aid. It's not going to be money is the reason they don't come to NTCC. So we've given them an opportunity to take that excuse away, plus we can help them in other ways. Thank you for that question. Go ahead and finish. Great question. If a young person's finished high school and they're out there and they've been thinking, "I wanted to go, but I didn't go," they can apply for the program. They come in, they work during the summer, and they're immediately in college their freshman year. They have two years after the summer that they work to use the money. So, and that means they can be part-time, because y'all know, the reality in our area, most of our students at our college work, many of them full-time jobs out there somewhere. So the high school students, they either go, they go to college, or they go straight into the workforce, or they do nothing, you know? And we're trying to stop the ones who are doing nothing and help the ones that are already doing the other things. But good question, great question. Yeah, and tell them to apply. It's workforcollege.com, that's W-O-R-K, the number four in college. And there's an application on there, or we're going to leave these here for y'all to pick up on this table when the meeting's over. Any other questions? Oh, he asked where they turn the application in. If they pick up this application, they just mail it in with the address on the bottom. And it's a simple education, excuse me, simple application, but it does require them to send in their high school transcript. That's so we know what grade they're in, so we know they're eligible for the program. It's not so we know if they make straight A's, because this is not based off if you're a straight A student. It's based off whether or not you're willing to work. And so we want the applications filled out and sent in to us. The one online will automatically come to Mason's office, and he does every one of those. It is competitive. The sooner they fill those out, the better. The difference about if you do it on your high school, it's competitive. So we had about 140 applicants for 95 positions last year. If you do it on their high school, I keep saying high school. If you do it on your school districts, campuses, then y'all would, we'd work with the administration here to choose the students they think really, really could use the help. And it wouldn't be somebody from Hart's Bluff School coming over here working. It'd only be Dangerfield students working on your campus, your campus, but we'd also like them on our campus too. You know, you could have 12 on your campus and maybe 12 out at our college. But, great question, though. They turn it in online, fill it out, or just mail this in? Like I say, I will leave these right here on this table. So please, if you know, even if you know, it doesn't have to be a family member. You know of somebody that lives next door, goes to church with you or something, you think, "Man, this is tailor-made for them." Get them to fill out an application. And they can call Mason, my name's John McCullough. And you can call. Our college is small, call and ask for Mason or John, and they'll get it to the right person, okay? And I know enough of you in here, y'all know exactly how to track me down, you know? So feel free to use some of your resources in here. Any other questions? I'm sorry for taking so long. You're welcome. Thank you.
Next, we have the state band program, virgin and student.
Okay, so I do have this in PowerPoint form. It's not quite set up today, but for those of you guys that don't know, my name is Bobby Alford, I'm the director of bands here at Dangerfield Long Star ISD. It's definitely comforting to have a big audience. I see a lot of familiar faces, a lot of parents of current band students, a lot of current band students. And so my goal today is just to kind of inform you guys and really inform everybody of the trajectory of our programs, some of our needs, some of our wants, and my plan to grow the program as much as I possibly can. Our program currently consists of three bands. We've got our beginner group, which is any kid in junior high that is just starting band for the first year. Okay, that may be your child. Okay, that may be a child of a friend that you know. We have our junior high group for anybody in grade seven, eight that is not part of our top varsity ensemble. And then we have our varsity ensemble, which currently has about 65 students and is slated to have about 80 to 90 next year. It's really, really, really great. My vision for our program one is growth and retention. Okay, when you come to our Christmas concert, or when you come to a football game or anything like that, I want to open this up and make sure that we offer a music education to as many kids as we possibly can. Because band is probably the most inclusive group on our campus. Truly, anybody can be involved. You know, it's not a boys' thing or a girls', it's anybody. Provide students with post-graduation opportunities. Over half of our senior class in band currently has a college scholarship to ETBU, to Kilgore, local places where they can go far enough to live their own life, but close enough to where they can come home. And last but not least, transform Dangerfield into a hub for music education and performing arts in East Texas. Okay, when you think of a group, when you think of a band, I'm sure there's plenty of schools nearby that you zip right to. You're like, yeah, they got a good program. They always have had a good program. I would like to see that for us. And I think that that is very achievable. How? Focus on expanding our beginner band experience. Get every sixth grader involved in our band for one year. And at the end of the year, if they're like, eh, this might not be my thing, cool. All right, boost the confidence of our students and the atmosphere of our campus by providing high-quality equipment and instruction. And of course, ensuring the band is an inclusive experience for everybody. For those of you guys that don't know, our region is a hub for the best bands in the state at the 3A level. Okay, we have our Queen Cities, our Atlantas, our Red Waters, who are in San Antonio every single year. Okay, five out of the top seven bands in our state are within 45 minutes of Dangerfield. All but two of the state champions from the past 16 years are 45 minutes away from Dangerfield. Now, our band program this year received unanimous first divisions, which is the absolute best we could do at contests, which was a really, really, really cool experience. If you guys have kids in that program, if you guys know kids in that program, when that score came over the intercom and when we had that big trophy, they melted on the ground crying, you would have thought somebody passed away. But we have a really, really long way to go as well. And if you see kind of toward the back of that packet, I've attached some pictures of other programs in our area as well as ours. And while we had a great-looking group this year, if you put our picture next to some others, we almost look like, it just, it looks like there's something missing. So the number. I have spent the past couple of months on the phone with just about every single band director in our region, kind of picking their brain, "How much money are you spending on this? How much money are you spending on this? How many kids do you have in your program? How much money are you spending per kid in your program?" And I took all of those state qualifying bands, found all their budgeting. They spend, on average, about $167,000 a year on their booths. Some of them were over $200,000. We are currently at 40. The average cost of a marching show for a season, on average, they spent about $35,000. Last year, we were at 5. And you're poor, that one, they're at 2. Our current inventory, as of right now, slated for growth for the 23, 24 school year, we will be short at those many instruments, as you can see. And that number does not account for anything that needs to be replaced. That's strictly stuff that just does not exist at the moment. With all students who are currently involved in our band, if they continue to choose to do band next year, we will be lacking about $106,000 in strictly instruments and sound equipment and instrument. And we can rectify this in one of two ways. If we provide all of that for every kid that wants to do band, that's looking at about $120,000. If we provide everything except for some of our smaller instruments, our flutes, our clarinettes, our cheaper instruments, that is very natural to ask kids to buy on their own. That's what a lot of programs do. That we would be looking at about 95. Now, I've got attached a five-year plan to ramp our budget up to what your Red Waters and your Queen Cities have. That's a projected involvement for kids in the program, 6 to 12. That is every dollar that I think that we would possibly need for that new period. And you guys can see that as we go. It's $20,000 here on top of that instrument fee. Right now, we are currently budgeted at about $40 per kid for supplies for band and about $85 per kid for meals. $85 at the current seven, that's 12 meals for a year. We will most likely play more than 12 football games. And then I've got attached band thieves, what they will be asked to provide for themselves next year as well, as far as supplies, as far as like their t-shirt, shoes, and things like that. Then I've got, like I said, I've got some pictures of some bands, pretty much who we're trying to be like. You know, I've sat down with the band and created collective goals. We want to be competitive. We want to do what these other groups are doing. We're not quite that big as some of them. And we're not going to put 140 kids on the field next year like Atlanta did. But we will probably put about 80 on the field like Red Waters did. We will be about that same size, but we do not currently have the sound equipment they have. We do not currently have the backdrop that they have, and so... And then I also attached some pictures of some stuff in our band hall. I don't know when the last time you guys have been in our band hall is. If you guys have been in there, probably within the past five years, you can see the soundproofing on the wall, it's just gates full of holes that looked like somebody just took a knife and just, shoo, shoo, just all through it. That soundproofing is beneficial to me as a director because it allows me to hear things that I would not normally hear without. But really, what it boils down to is, if the kids walk in there every day and they see something that just looks like it's going to be a knife stuck through it, if they walk in there every day and they've got, we've got 50-year-old instruments and things like that, it's going to be very hard for them to buy into that. I think that they've done a great job of doing that this year. But I would like to see them build a little bit more confidence within themselves and say, "Hey, we can do what these other groups are doing." Because like I said, we've got groups 30, 45 minutes from us. Because like I said, we've got groups 30, 45 minutes from us that have all the new shiny stuff. Like they've got, they've, they've got it made. Those kids that grow up like our kids do, kids that go to church with our kids probably, uh, have all the nice and shiny stuff too. And I also put on there about some shelves and some instrument lockers. I would love to discuss that a little bit more in depth with you guys at any point. I know that that's a big number with a lot of zero. And I knew it was gonna be, and it was even bigger than I thought it was. You know, not, not, not a blank check tomorrow kind of thing, but would love to be able to, to at least start the, go to ramp up to that however rapidly. Welcome questions from anybody, um, now or later. And thank you guys for giving me an audience. I appreciate it.
We'll move on to our action items. Our first action item is deliberate and consider approval of a joint election agreement with the city of Dangerfield, city of Bonestar, and northeast Texas community college. Okay, on the next page, what is the task of the joint election agreement that will serve our schools that would be the nation's Bonestar and the college to have common polling places? Motion made by Neil Roney, second by James Duke. Pauline Bevler, raise your hand. Motion carries. We'll move on to our second action item. Deliberate and consider approval of our 2023 election day judge, deputy election day judge, early voting clerk, deputy early voting clerk, and early voting ballot board judge and deputy.
We would be voting on to approve the election day judge, Libby Looping, deputy election day judge, Pamela Sam, early voting clerk, Lana Elwell, deputy early voting clerk, Marsha Johnson, early voting ballot board judge, Linda White, and deputy early voting ballot board judge, John White.
My motion approved.
Motion made by Scott Paulin, second by Neil Roney. Pauline Bevler, raise your hand. Motion carries. We'll move on to our next action item. Deliberate and consider adoption of provisions to the CKC Local Safety Program Risk Management, Emergency Plans, DH Local, Employees Standard of Conduct, and GKA Local, Community Relations Conduct on school premises, school board policies.
Okay, we've been working with TASB to update our policies concerning the guardian program and, um, the old school board policies that are mentioned. And they put in what the language should be in the blues and in the red, they can read it, the online ones.
I make the motion with adoption of provisions to the CKC Local, DH Local, GKA Local, as we have kind of TASB policies, so we see what's going to happen.
Motion made by Joe Austin, second by James Duke. Pauline Bevler, raise your hand. Motion carries. Next, we move on to deliberate and consider approval of plan for reducing an excessive operating food service department fund balance.
We have our first here, you know, Ms. Tricia Quinn here tonight, and she's going to, um, talk to you about her plan for reducing the excessive operating food service balance.
Um, so, um, I believe they gave you a list of items, um, that I would like to buy from the cafeteria. Um, several, our cafeteria has a lot of older equipment, um, steamers, uh, that are, are old and they just, they don't work right. Um, uh, sometimes they end up having to change at last minute to try and get the food done in time. Um, oven, uh, stoves that don't work, um, properly. One of them may have to bang on it sometimes to get it to line. That's not safe. So, uh, definitely need to try to get that changed. Um, we, uh, some, some tablets, uh, and menu analysis program, uh, which will assist us with making sure that we're meeting our TBA requirements. Um, as all know, we have government that restricts, you know, our sodium, a lot of different things like that with our food. Um, and kind of calculate all that for four different campuses and getting that all. Um, it just was not getting any errors, um, and help us to make sure they're staying current. It's updated annually every year, um, not only with TBA, but also with the vendors to make sure that they're getting current nutrition information. So it's a very awesome program that would much, much help for us in the cafeteria to make sure we're giving them healthy meals and, and having good meals. Um, some work tables, mixers, um, it's just really just some equipment that's really needed in the kitchens, um, that we need to support this room. So, uh, if y'all have any questions about any of it, I'll answer anything on that. I would like to also add, there, there is a recognition check on there. And, um, I would just like to say that that's much needed for our ladies. Um, the cafeteria staff has worked through all of COVID's up and downs. Um, we have ladies up here signing lunches and just working through some really tough times, extreme times, uh, difficult times, having to adjust and make changes that none of us really even were prepared for. Um, it was not something that had ever happened before. And the ladies in the cafeteria worked very hard through that. They worked diligently. They didn't complain. Um, they took care of the kids, and, uh, they're still doing that. Our supply is still an issue somewhat, and, and they still don't complain. They make the changes, they adjust what they need to, and they're here every day feeding these kids to the best of their ability. And I just feel like they really need that extra little pat on the back to say, we appreciate you and we appreciate what you're doing up here. That you're not unseen, you're not overlooked. We understand and, and see that home nutrition is important too. Um, so I would just, I just wanted to kind of put that in there that it's something I'd go very much should have had on this one. So, um, but the other equipment, it is much needed.
So you showed we have an excess of $97,000 thing. And what you're requesting is just $92,000, am I correct?
Yes, um, well, it was, it's 93. Um, there was one quote. Yeah, there was one quote that I could have gotten in later that I had. And just so that y'all know that the HSS is, by the TBA, we're only allowed to have three months operating HSS, so that's not a problem.
Motion made by, motion made by Neil Roney, second by Joe Austin. Pauline Bevler, raise your hand. Motion carries. At this time, we're going into our close session.